I am, uh, captaining our ship tonight. So, good evening, everyone. Uh, North Smithfield Town Council meeting today is November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, can you please start us preparing the clip?
Thank you for bringing... Working. Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Here.
Mr. Christopher O.
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Here.
Mr. Punchak?
Here.
Ms. Alves? Not present.
Not present. Um, I do not believe, so open forum, open forum rather pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six dash six. D, maximum of three minutes per person. I don't believe we have anybody signed up, but do we have anybody that would like to speak? Sir, if you could just approach the podium over there and just state your name and address.
My name is Michael Munjin. My address is four hundred Providence Pike, North Smithfield Island. Okay, we have a piece of property, the trust has a piece of property on one ninety-nine Eddie Dowling Highway that the town condemned. And, uh, I'd like to be put on a docket for discussion in regards to the facts why the property's been condemned. And, uh, it's, we've owned it for quite a few years and since the development went across the street and permits were just being handed out, uh, my property has been, uh, not inhabitable anymore. We got two and a half feet of water in the basement and just can't use it anymore. Something's gotta be done about it. So, I'd like to put that on for discussion.
Okay, thank you. We will, we will discuss it and let you know. Anybody else for open forum? We're having some car alarms going off. Are you good? Okay. Um, discussion by council vote or other action on collective bargaining, International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local Four Ten, uh, acceptance of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight bargaining agreement contract. Counselor, is there anything? You look like you want to say something.
No, it, I mean, Madam President, this matter's just down for a vote unless the council has further discussion. You've complied with the process.
Okay. Any questions? Any discussion? So, first and foremost, I really want to thank you guys for your patience. I know this has taken quite some time in order, um, to get to this point where we're at a place where we can approve. Um, I obviously fully intend to approve this contract tonight, but I did want to make mention one thing. Um, I truly hope that approval of this contract, um, as well as our prioritization of the police station renovations, demonstrate that we truly value you as our law enforcement within the town of North Smithfield. Um, we're committed, obviously, to supporting and working with you. And, but as an elected official, it's really my responsibility to represent the voice of our constituents, and I think I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that there is a public perception, um, that there's a little bit of a disconnect and a lack of harmonization between our local law enforcement and our town. So, I think that collectively, I'm committed, and I'm sure as well as our town council and administration, we're all committed to working together to really better develop and maintain close relationships with our law enforcement and our town, and I really hope that our most recent approval of this contract, as well as prioritization of the police station reflects that. So, thank you so much. Okay, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the collective bargaining, International Brotherhood of Police Officers Local Four Ten, um, twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight, uh, contract.
Second of all.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher O.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Stay safe, gentlemen.
Yes.
Every single one of you.
And ladies.
Oh, pardon me.
Okay, yeah, okay, thanks. Okay, discussion by council vote or other action on North Smithfield Public Safety Complex, the police station ordinance authorizing the town of North Smithfield to issue the general obligations bond and/or notes in an amount not to exceed nine million dollars to finance the construction, rehabilitation, and improvement of the town's public safety complex. Um, our first item under this item is scheduling the public hearing and our second reading for December first. So, our public hearing and second reading for the ordinance will be scheduled for our first meeting in December on December first. Any questions? Roll line.
Why are we gonna view the second meeting?
Councilman, um, a bond ordinance, the first read, first reading, all he can do is, his first reading is introduce it. You can't take any action on it. You really can't discuss it. You can only explain it. If you want an explanation, the administrator is well versed. Um, I'm certainly willing to weigh in, but it's a pretty straightforward document that's been discussed. Then you schedule the next meeting. You have to have a public hearing before you have a second reading. Now, you can have a public hearing and second reading on the same day, so we usually do that. And if you don't finish the public hearing on that, in type of, we can continue it. But there is some time sensitivity, as you recall. The town's representative's December fifteenth, is that the date deadline? December fifteenth is the deadline for the Secretary of State in order to make the, uh...
February?
February third election. So, um, whether, however this goes, that, that timeline is tight. So, this has to be done. I don't know if that, hopefully I cleared it. Oh, we did? Oh, I apologize. I didn't realize you did a first reading then, then I, then I apologize.
Join us here, Michael.
Special meeting?
Okay, I wasn't here at the special meeting.
We didn't schedule the actual date, the second reading. We mentioned it, but it was never clarified to the public. So, I just wanted to make sure it was on the agenda so people knew.
Okay, so we are scheduling the public hearing and our second reading for December first. In the event that we have to continue the hearing, then we will at least have the fifteenth as our deadline.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, the, I, and this isn't necessarily an agenda item, but I know in preparation of the public hearing to discuss the ordinance, given that it's a prospective funding option, we mentioned last, we met last week that we discussed the opportunity for like a fiscal impact statement.
That will be prepared for December first.
Okay, can I make the recommendation to work with the budget committee?
I've been trying to reach to the budget committee and I have not gotten a return email yet from...
Okay.
Yeah, but we could work with the budget committee, but the issues of projecting fiscal impacts, I don't necessarily meet the budget committee, but I have more, I have no problem in sharing what I have.
Yeah.
Steve, our fiscal advisor, is the one that's more appropriate on that.
Yeah, I, I just would appreciate if the, I mean, the budget committee has been so involved, obviously, in creating our budget. Um, I think that it would be just a good set of eyes to have on...
Also, just a point of clarification, I just got a notice that there's a lot of static.
Wait.
Huh? There's a lot of static. It was from my wife, so she just may be referring to me.
Maybe that's all she hears when you talk, Scott. So, Michael, I know, obviously, you're here, you're on the budget committee. Scott said he's been trying to get in touch with somebody from the budget committee, so if you could just relay the message to the budget committee. Thanks, Michael. Okay, um, any other discussion?
What is, you want the budget committee to do?
So, the last, the last we met last week, we discussed the administration essentially preparing a fiscal impact statement or, or a forecast, rather, to, to determine or really demonstrate that with the bond, would there be any impact to our taxpayers?
Right.
So, I know that Scott, as well as, I think, the Finance Director and maybe even, um, Jen St. George, were planning on working on that, but my request is that the budget committee also partner with them just to, as another set of eyes, since they are obviously very close to our budget.
Again, I don't have a problem in sharing that, but what I will, what I'm developing now will be, first be shared with our fiscal advisor.
Yes, absolutely, as it should, yeah.
I just don't want this to be slowed down because of a little bureaucracy. They can't get, they can't get a forum, they have the information, they can't get it to the budget committee. I, I, I don't want to create too many, too many hoops for everybody to jump through.
Well, we'll still, we'll still conform to the December first deadline, absolutely.
Yeah, it's not contingent. It's not like a requirement like the police contract was. This is just a request. Thank you. Um, award of contract for construction manager, A one A document, A one three-three dash twenty nineteen slash A two zero one dash twenty seventeen, a two-part contract.
Uh, council president, or acting council president, if I could just step in on this. Um, as we agreed at the special meeting, we were not going to have a fully vetted out document on time for the posting for the council package. Um, so what we sent out to was a contract that was sent back to us by the CM with a lot of questions. Following that, um, I reviewed the contract as well as ECC reviewed the contract. A revised contract has been prepared and has been handed out to you tonight. So, what we are asking, really a couple options. Option one, based on the presentation and questions posed to ECC. If you're comfortable in voting to authorize the administrator to sign that, that would be great. If you still have unanswered questions and are still wanting to get more clarification, I would like to at least have approval, uh, to go through and engage, um, the CM to do the pre-construction process because we want to get that underway.
Just a copy of the, uh, presentation?
And you're doing a presentation tonight as well?
Yeah, it's just a quick one.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, uh, Town Council President and members. Yeah, so what you had received, the package originally was the base draft contract that was received, was given to us by Parasol Builders. Since then, we've been able to take that, review it. Um, Scott has had some comments on it. Just one? Um, and ECC has also had some comments. The package I just sent, gave you is the highlighted comments that we had. Um, pieces that have been added to it, there's been some descriptions, um, some timelines, some timelines in there that have been added, um, as well as some of the comments that Scott had, and then we replied to them. Um, nothing major. Um, it's really more just filling out information. And, um, there is other pieces to this contract. The second piece is, um, the, uh, GCs, uh, which is another package to the, uh, exhibit that goes along with this. Um, but yeah, tonight was the, tonight is the intent to release Parasol Builders to their pre-con construction, which is for the seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars.
So, is this contract specific to the pre-construction?
This contract is for everything. But it does have part one is that pre-construction piece.
I think my only question as I was reviewing this contract, and I am not going to pretend that I understand all of this stuff. Um, but my question was section six point two regarding the guaranteed maximum price.
Yep.
It states that there's an amendment, but I did not see an amendment.
So, the GMP is its own document.
Okay.
That is that amendment. That gets, once, once we get through this contract signed, the GMP is the grand ma, uh, uh, greatest maximum price, yeah, guaranteed maximum price. That comes back in as an amendment.
Okay, and then we would have to approve that at a later date?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And that's the full fees. With the, you know, with the exception of the, well, the seventeen thousand is part of that, but this contract here is for the full dollar amount, but that section one is pre-construction.
Okay. And it did mention in here that we have a six million dollar budget. I believe it was the owner's budget.
Yes.
We know that Parasol came back with the seven point two.
Yes.
And the add alternate costs would obviously...
And that seven point two, that's what comes in, is that GMP.
Okay.
Yep. Um, if you want to just flip through the next slide. This is just, and this is kind of tough to see, but this is, um, this is the front page of the contract, the one thirty-three. Uh, second slide. This just goes through some of those things that are in that packet that we highlighted. If anyone wants to discuss them, we can. It's really just Article One, uh, was the program statement, which we added in from the original one you had seen. Um, one point one four, um, just adds in some more timelines and, uh, punch list completion and project closeout, which gives us those final dates. The original contract that you saw only had a substantial completion date on it. So, we added those dates in, which is one month and two months after that substantial completion. Uh, next one's out, we just added Scott as contacts, uh, added civil engineering. And then, these are just a few things that we can talk about, but Article Four, uh, these are a few things that we probably were reviewing and finalizing that final contract. I'd say it was pretty quick.
Thank you for specifically pulling those out.
Yes, yes.
So, we didn't have to read through this whole thing.
Brian, could you explain, please, how, under this contract, subsequent add alts are addressed?
Yeah, so that's, um, that comes in as that with the amendment of the GMP is, uh, that'll be listed out as add alternates and what's, what's accepted and what's not.
I think it would have been helpful to have that exhibit as part of, as part of this.
Yeah, I can get that.
Because I think it would have answered a lot of Scott's comments.
Yep.
Um, regarding routine and things like that. Um, and then the other thing is they, uh, Parasol referenced like Exhibit A and Exhibit D and stuff like that.
Yep.
It would have been helpful for me.
Okay.
You know, obviously, we get another shot at it once we do get that exhibit, but, um, just being able to see the whole package as it is.
Absolutely.
Would have been...
Yeah, it's pretty extensive. I do have all those exhibits I can get out to everyone. That is helpful.
Uh, personally, uh, you know, it's seventeen thousand dollars. We've talked about this. We've talked about wanting to move forward, so, um, it's not, in my opinion, a big enough risk to say, geez, this is crazy for us to approve this contract with.
Yep.
You know, it's so boilerplate.
It really is.
The specifics that they commented weren't anything really earth-shattering, that's for sure, so...
No, it's a pretty standard CIA contract. Uh, if you go to the last page, there's a few comments that we had, actually, sorry, the next one. Did that go in? I apologize. Uh, I can send it out, uh, so it was an email I sent to Scott and David, um, pointing out a few areas that, you know, ECC would recommend doing certain things like, um, uh, the, the CM's timing on paying their subcontractors. Right now, it's paid when paid. So, when, when they get paid from the town of North Smithfield, that's when they pay their subcontractors. Um, standard, it's, you know, industry standard. But we also see with, you know, the, uh, we've had some issues where in the past, you know, CMs hold that off and you have the potential of a, you know, subcontractor walking off if it's past sixty days. Um, so we like to recommend sometimes that it can be, um, paid per terms so that the CM would have to pay within thirty days whether or not they're getting paid from the town. I don't know what you think about that.
Catch forty-two and they'd be...
I know, I know it is.
You know, they, their subcontract could likely already say, listen, it's pay when paid.
Yep.
So, now we're going and telling them, you know, I know some contractors have, you know, seven-day float, ten-day float, so when we get paid, we hold the money for seven days before we pay you, ten days, whatever it is, so we can make some interest on it. Um, uh, yeah, it's just kind of double-edged sword, really.
Yeah.
I don't know that we want to be saying you have to pay your subcontractors in thirty days.
Yeah. It's, I don't see it being an issue on this project. We've seen on other projects where we're going through bank funding. If that bank holds you off for any reason, then, then it presents a problem, but I don't see it being an issue here.
Yeah, it can get dicey.
Yep. How was it? Any questions?
Well, just while we're on the subject, uh, we're kind of on the subject, about people getting paid. The last, the building review committee, uh, Dave Chamberlain and Paul Vaden, they're really smart guys. We're lucky to have them on the committee. They picked up that the roofer, we were paying the roofer to pay his guys the prevailing wage, but his guys weren't getting the prevailing wage. How do we make sure that, if we're paying it out, how do we make sure that the contractors are paying their subs the prevailing wage?
Yeah, we're getting the prevailing wage, wage reports monthly.
Okay.
With the requisitions, that's something that we'll, we'll be reviewing.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's a problem, but yeah, we'll, we'll monitor that.
Let's hope no one from DLT is listening right now. Uh, you just got someone in big trouble.
They figured it out, and they made sure them they all got paid.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, certified payrolls and, you know, granted, they can still forge them and, but...
Can, but that's a bigger problem.
No, no, everybody got their money, but, uh, it's a good thing Paul Vaden and Dave Chamberlain are on top of it.
Yeah.
And they made sure of it, you know, so...
Yeah. Yeah, the certified payroll reports tell us all of it's, um...
Okay.
Yep.
Any additional questions or discussion points? So, I'd just like to clarify that our two options for motion tonight are motion to proceed with just the pre-construction, the seventeen thousand, uh, dollar contract or that phase one for Parasol to move forward with pre-construction, or is there another option to, for...
The, my suggested second option, and I don't have a dog in the fight, I mean, it's whatever you guys want to do, would be to approve the administrator execute the contract subject to the solicitor's review and approval of the contract. My biggest concern is I just want to make sure that we keep going on the pre-construction services because that's a critical path issue. And if we can at least get that, then, and council will feel more comfortable coming back at a subsequent meeting with a contract with all the attached documents, that's fine, too.
I like Plan B. Have the solicitor and the administrator go over the contract before we vote on it.
My, my only concern is I would, I would want, um, there's some questions about seeing the rest of the documents and it, um, so could authorize that, and I guess if I receive any comments from any council people of concern, then, then I, then I would ask for it to come back on. Because I just don't want to have a situation where you've authorized us to do it and somebody, the document comes in and all of a sudden you have questions. I know, Councilman Punchak, he lives with these contracts all day long and he doesn't have it in front of him. I, I, again, I just, I'm, I'm looking at you, Councilman, because I, I got the sense that you felt uncomfortable.
I, I think to make it simple, it's just, I would request an approval for bringing, going forth pre-construction services. And then we can make sure we come back with a complete package and that you'd get it in advance of the meeting.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Like, you know, like I said, it's it's a relatively limited scope, right? We've seen, or ECC has definitely seen what they've proposed for scope. We want to keep moving forward on pre-construction. The important aspects of pre-construction are captured here. Cost, dates, what happens if it goes beyond, so, you know, we're, we're safe there going forward once we do go for the GMP. Like, before now and then, I would like to see Exhibit A, you know, boilerplate information before it's populated. I don't need to know that now because we're not talking about that phase, but I'd like to, you know, be able to see that prior to. And everything else, I'm pretty sure I've seen, um, you know, all of the exhibits. It was not necessarily common for me. I don't know that we've seen that as a collective, um, you know, committee or council. Uh, so, if everyone else is okay with it.
There wouldn't be any delay to pre-construction or the project if we were to say we're going to authorize pre-construction and then before we approve the actual contract, we'd like to see essentially the final.
No.
No.
No, because that pre-construction piece is getting you to that.
Right.
I, I think the big question there is just to make sure that the CM is comfortable with that.
Yep, yeah, and they are, yep. As long as this doesn't change drastically, I'm okay with that. And I don't see how it could change drastically unless things just totally go bizarre, so...
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see any major changes.
No, it's not, you know, Parasol presented what they wanted, and in my opinion, it was a relatively easy ask.
Yep.
They weren't asking for, you know, anything, or I didn't get the impression they were trying to sneak something in. It was, you know, as clear as can be.
No.
Like, you know, when they start trying to throw things in there, that, there was never been a discussion about, it makes you start to question it, but that definitely didn't happen here, and, um, I don't see it as a major concern.
Okay, so are we making a motion to authorize pre-construction?
So, I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator in conjunction with the town solicitor to finalize this, uh, pre-construction phase of, um, the Parasol, uh, contract. And authorize signature. I'll second.
So, we have a motion in a second. We'll open up for further discussion. I don't, I mean...
That, um, we just, we just confused, um, Councilman, did you mean just the pre-construction? Are you authorizing the whole contract to the CM?
Well, it's, so you, I can't authorize the whole contract because Exhibit A guaranteed maximum price amendment.
Well, I just wanted, we just wanted to make sure that you were doing option one.
Pre-construction.
What's in front of you?
Seventeen thousand seventy.
Okay.
For the pre-construction phase of approximately two months' worth of work, which gets us the ability to get that Exhibit A in front of us.
Right. Thank you very much. So that Exhibit A, Exhibit A comes in, obviously is an amendment change order, whatever we're going to call it, to the, it'd be, whatever that value is, gets added to the seventeen thousand that's in this contract.
Right.
Yep.
So where, so essentially, David, you made a motion to authorize the pre-construction phase or contract of the police station this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Does that require a signature?
Yes.
Okay.
This does, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's basically signing this contract.
Yes.
Even though it has a six million dollar budget in there, it's seventeen thousand and that, that Exhibit A, GMP will raise that number up, whatever the cost is for the construction.
Okay.
Yep.
And John, you made, you motioned second.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Did we clarify enough that we can move forward with roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherrow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Our next item is discussion by council vote or other action on grant of easement to Narragansett Electric Company and Verizon New England Corporation, zero, Mattity Road, Assessor's Plat 10, Lot 218. Approval in support of resolution authorizing the town administrator to sign a grant, easement to the benefit of the Narragansett Electric Company and Verizon New England Corporation for town-owned property identified as North Smithfield, Assessor's Plat 10, Lot 218. It is my understanding that our administration and the town solicitor have yet to review that easement?
Yeah, the, the administration is requesting that this be pulled and be reintroduced at that time that the solicitor and the administration has reviewed it. I did have a conversation with the energy company's facilitator today. He was asking for a status report and I said I would not recommend it being signed at this point and that we would look to have that resurfaced on the December first meeting.
Okay.
Because there's some language and issues and lack of clarity on that grant easement that I'm not comfortable with.
Okay.
Can I make one just general comment?
Please do.
All right, so on the resolution, it refers to Verizon Electric, is that right? Where it says in the easement Verizon New England Inc.
Yeah, and I'll ask for clarification on that, counselor. The problem is that whole industry is so convoluted right now that you can see multiple energy companies being part of the same document because of the history of the acquisitions and operating units. But I'll ask for clarification on that.
So do we need a motion to table the vote until the December first meeting?
No.
No.
Just pass it off the agenda, please.
Okay. How do we pass it off the agenda? I'm passing this off the agenda?
No action.
Okay, no action taken on this item. Okay. Discussion by council vote or other action on consent agenda. All items listed in this section are considered in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a counselor requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda, Town Council mittens of October sixteen, twenty, and November three, ten, twenty, twenty-five.
I had some grammatical and.
I can't with you and your grammar?
Well, it's, do you want to hear them? Or do you want me to email them to you?
Email them.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, no, it, I don't know.
Isn't it AI?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's a lot of the, that's a lot of the crux of it.
It doesn't catch it?
Exactly.
Okay.
It doesn't take real context into what's happening.
Communications, Animal Control Monthly Report for October twenty twenty-five, North Smithfield Fire and Rescue Monthly Report for October twenty twenty-five, North Smithfield Municipal Court Monthly Report for October twenty twenty-five, and North Smithfield Police Department Monthly Report for October twenty twenty-five. Do we have any questions on any of these items? I do have one question, but I'll let you guys go first.
Nothing for me?
Nothing, okay. The only question that I have is on the North Smithfield Police Department Monthly Activity Report. I did notice that for the month of October, we had fifty-five accidents. And I was just wondering, because I remember that crime scene mapping technology that we approved, I think it was last year, or maybe it was the beginning of the year. How, are, how many of those accidents have, have we used that crime scene mapping? Do we have a number?
Accident reconstruction, I believe, is what called out in any of those accidents.
Okay.
Once, if, if the accident reconstruction team is called out because it's a major accident with.
Gotcha.
An arrest involved or a fatality, then you utilize that machine or that equipment to mock that scene.
Okay.
So, we haven't had, hopefully so, we haven't had those yet, so.
Okay.
A lot of those are just, we're on the mill associate accidents that we need to respond to.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherrow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to save the best for last. Tony, payment of bills is going to be last tonight. Let's do new business. Discussion by council vote or other action on approval of contract for Department of Public Works, twenty twenty-six, townwide road improvement. Does that mean improvements? Do you mean improvements? Improvements?
Improvements, yes.
Town administrator, Mr. Gibbs.
Yeah, this is usually to be presented by the EPW director, who's right now probably in a bar in Aruba.
No, he's in, they're in Italy.
Huh?
They're in Italy.
I thought they went to Tropical Island.
Bath bars in Italy.
Okay, even better. So I'll pick it up. As part of the road improvement program, which the council appropriates funds under the budget, the Public Works Department has prepared a list of about ten roads, which I've actually visited each of those roads just to get a better idea as to their condition. What this does, we went out to two of our three on-call engineers. The third one was not interested in the project. And the purpose is that they would be engaged to review each of those roads and come up with a preliminary budget for the roads. Once we have the preliminary budget, then we can develop a final list based on our budget allotment as to what we can get done and what we can't get done. So in this particular case, I think the proposal is to engage Crossman Engineering, which was the successful firm to be engaged to actually do that analysis.
So they're just completing the preliminary work? They're not actually fixing the roads?
Oh, no, no. This is a civil engineer whose job is to review each of those roads on the list of ten, to review their condition and the scope of what it's going to be necessary to improve the road, and a budget for improving each of those roads. Once we have a tally on the budget, then we'll identify what are the maximum number of roads we can redo within the budget allotment that we have.
Okay.
No, they, we will end up, we'll have to go out to bid for that construction work. That work will not happen until spring. No needed, well, it's obviously very late now, so the work will happen. Last year was in the fall. Most of those roads were redone again in the spring because of lack of satisfactory work. This time, we will go out to bid for a spring construction.
Okay. Any questions?
You said ten roads. Crossman references twenty?
Yeah, I think it's twenty.
Then it's twenty. I think I just visited ten. There's, there's a lot of roads that have a lot of little satellite roads off of it, so I was just looking at the main roads. But whatever the list is that was prepared by DPW is what Crossman will look at.
Have we completed a similar exercise in the past?
Yes.
Two thousand thirteen or whatever.
Last year, we did it, we had a different firm under contract to review.
So I, just thought, you probably can't answer this, but didn't we just approve something for drainage off of Mechanic Street or something? Wasn't there some?
No, what we, what, we didn't approve anything. What we were, what we were granted, we were given a grant by the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. And the purpose of that grant is to analyze what is the flooding problem, not just for Mechanic Street, but Green Street and School Street, all of which are part of the same brick. So it's an engineering study to identify what's the problem, how do we mitigate it. And from that, we will then end up developing what are the specific actions that we have to implement to control the situation, and we'll be trying to get some grant funding to do that.
So that's not included?
No, it's not.
I feel like you're referring to something else that Ray discussed, that Ray brought to us a while back.
There was definitely something about drainage and there was definitely a cost associated with it.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it was mechanic or maybe down there gators.
Yeah, I don't remember where exactly it was, but.
Neither one of those roads are on that list anyways.
Um, so you said that we completed a similar exercise last year? So we are not using?
With a different firm.
So we're not using any of the work that that last firm completed to help us better understand what roads need to be?
We still have that information.
Yeah.
But we're working with a different engineering firm right now, and so, which is our on-call engineers, and therefore we are, we're going to review, there probably is some overlap with some of those roads, and there's probably some new roads that are on that list as well. Because even when a road doesn't hit the list one year, we will find that the deterioration of that road is so significant over a twelve-month period that it now comes up. So we can still look at the, the estimation that was previously done, but we're looking at the total, total project, all, all roads.
I mean, how much money did we spend on this last assessment?
I don't know that, but construction prices have significantly changed. So.
But if we already paid to have the, I mean, obviously this needs to be done.
Yep.
But if we already paid to have an assessment completed to understand what roads in town needed to be improved and we're not using that?
That's not what this project is. The assessment of the roads to be improved are done by the DPW internally.
Okay.
This is simply, based on that assessment by DPW, take a look at those roads, engineer and tell us how much is it going to cost to bring that road back to a certain condition.
Okay.
They are giving us construction numbers. Those numbers are what we use to define the final list.
Okay, got you. Thank you for that clarification. I was a little bit confused. Okay. Any questions? So the motion is to approve the contract with Crossman Engineering?
Correct.
To complete a twenty twenty-six townwide road improvement?
Yes.
Assessment?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's to authorize the administrator to sign the contract.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six townwide road improvement contract for Crossman Engineering on the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars and authorize the town administrator to sign.
We have a motion. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherrow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion by council vote or other action on communications from town administrator, Mr. Gibbs, asset management program status?
The Asset Management Commission is going to be coming back to the council shortly. They went through a arduous process to find a strategy, went out for an RFP. I believe the proposals had, were submitted, Tony, was it a December, November eighteenth deadline on that? They're being evaluated and ranked right now. So we will come back to the council with a presentation. I don't think that's going to be ready for December one, and we're certainly not doing it on December fifteenth. So we'll probably have to wait until the first of the year.
Grant status?
The only update on, up that, well, I previously mentioned, and it's actually the third item, the one forty-six project. We were awarded a grant from the state. The, it's a, we, we've received grants in the past through the Municipal Technical Assistance Program called MTAP. We previously got a grant to rewrite our zoning ordinance, which is being finalized right now, which I'll have to go back to the council for approval. This is the same thing. We're not the one that actually enters into a contract with the state. The consultant does. So what the state does is they provide us a pre-selected list of consultants. I think they had like seven or eight consultants on that list. One of the consultants happened to be Camoyen, which is the same firm that did our feasibility study. So we went to Camoyen and said, we want you to submit a proposal on our behalf. We put together a scope, they submit to the state, and the state approved it. So Camoyen will be the one that'll sign the contract with the state. We'll simply, you know, approve the scope of services, which is what was put into the, into the proposal anyways. So that's underway. We don't have anything, anything yet in writing back from Camoyen. So again, I think that's something that's going to start kicking off in January. The minute that starts kicking off, we will again coordinate that with the Economic Development Commission, as we did previously on the feasibility side. The only other thing that's an update, and I already referenced it, was the grant that we received from the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. We indicated to us probably sixty days before we get the formal documents for execution. Obviously, when those come in, I will go before the town council asking authorization to sign those documents. And then we're going to have to go out for an RFP for those services. I asked the state, the infrastructure bank, if I could go ahead and start that process now. They said, well, we typically don't like that, but as long as you include in your RFP contract provisions that we need as part of the state requirements, we're okay with that. So I'm reviewing those right now to see if we can fast track it instead of waiting to February for documents that we can start this work earlier. So that's still under review.
Any questions? My only question, town administrator, is since we've contracted with Lisa as our grant writer, how many of the grants that we've applied for since then has Lisa initiated?
Lisa has been, excuse me, Redwood Consulting has been involved in all of the discussions with the state. To be honest with you, in many cases, the administration is, is an initiating party on a lot of this. And Lisa will reach out to us and say, by the way, such and such is happening. We'll make sure we circle around that. Sometimes we'll let Lisa take the lead. Sometimes, in the case of the recreation grant, we take the lead. Because Mark Crullo is the one that's been working on this project for a long time, and then we end up circling back with Lisa to review the documents, identify any things that are missing. So it really depends on the grant program.
Okay.
That we're using, but she touches every project that we're working on.
Okay, thank you. And then the Route one forty-six Tiff project status is, you've already provided that update. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. North Smithfield Town Council sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. Discussion by council vote or other action on renewal of yearly licenses, twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. You stole my hard copy there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, we didn't have that.
It's on that side.
You didn't get it in your pocket?
I'm telling you.
Oh, never mind, Claire, I got it. Okay.
Yeah, written.
It's right after that.
David, I, I think this was our hazing last year. Our first meeting, I think, was license.
It is. That's the first meeting.
It was our, our town council hazing. Okay. Town of North Smithfield, Rhode Island, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six liquor license renewals. All licenses are subject to certificate of good standing, payment of town taxes, approval from DOH, insurance certificate, fire inspection, server training certification, and all fees paid. I believe last year we went business by business. Are we okay going by classes this year? I believe last year we went business by business, are we okay going by classes this year?
If you go by the class, just pull out any that you have a problem.
Yes. Okay. Class A package stores.
So as far as like, all, the, all licenses are subject to, all of that stuff is done or is being done?
Correct, correct.
Firm on each, each vote that that's done in that class, if you're going to do it by class?
Mm-hmm. So like, similar to what we do with?
Individuals.
Individuals, okay. So Joanne, everything's all set for the package stores?
North Smithfield Liquor Warehouse and Park Square Wine and Spirits.
We, we may be waiting for any of these documents. What we need to do is get approval by the council while we're waiting for the rest of the documents. If we do not receive payments and documents, it goes no further.
Okay.
So the council is not the final action.
Okay.
Otherwise, they would not have their, have all their licenses in time for the first. So what, once we get everything, then we approve them, but we need your approval.
So you need our essential authorization in order to, okay, okay, so class A.
I, I.
So they're subject to, these documents are paid fees.
Okay.
Just to make it clear, we just, we should just recite it, it's on the top of the page.
Right.
I did recite it.
She did.
Okay.
I did, okay. Okay, class A package stores.
I will make a motion to renew the licenses for the two businesses listed under class A package stores, subject to the certificate of good standing, payment of town taxes, approval from DOH, insur, insurance certificate, fire inspection, server training certification, and all fees paid.
That's a motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Okay, class BV, I don't know how to pronounce this.
Victualling.
Victualling.
Know all about it.
Should I read all of these names?
I think we said we weren't going to do that, we were just going to do classes, unless we want, we specifically want to pull any, any of these.
It's kind of like the consent agenda.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to renew the licenses for the businesses listed in class B, Victualling, subject to certificate of good standing, payment of town taxes, approval from DOH, insurance certificate, fire inspection, server training certification, and all fees paid.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Class BVL, Victualling Limited.
I will make a motion to renew the licenses for the two businesses listed in class BVL, Victualling Limited, subject to certificate of good standing, payment of town taxes, approval from DOH, insurance certificate, fire inspection, server training certification, and all fees paid.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we need to state that every time, councilor?
No.
You could make it a blanket consideration.
Okay, excellent. Class D, Club Full Privilege.
We didn't do a roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Class D, Club Full Privilege.
I will make a motion to renew the licenses for the three businesses listed under class D, Club Full Privilege.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
That's it.
Okay.
Yes, with the conditions stated, dito.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Victualling with extended hours, 2:00 AM through 6:00 AM, and holiday sales licenses. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the licenses for the six businesses listed under Victualling with extended hours, 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, and holiday sales licenses, subject to conditions at the top of the page.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Victualling with holiday sales license. Do we have a motion to renew?
I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the licenses for the nine businesses listed under Victualling with holiday sales license. This time I'm going to read the terms though, because they are different than the prior ones. And these licenses are subject to payment of town taxes, approval from DOH, fire inspection, and all fees paid.
Thanks, David. Roll call? Oh, wait, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Thank you, roll call?
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Victualling with theater license.
I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the license for the one business listed in Victualling with theater license, subject to the conditions above.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Victualling licenses only.
I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the licenses Victualling only for the eight businesses listed, subject to the terms above.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Town of North Smithfield, Rhode Island, 2025.
We need a roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Okay, Town of North Smithfield, Rhode Island, 2025, 2026, holiday sales, renewal licenses only. All licenses are subject to payment of town taxes, fire inspection approval, and all fees paid. Holiday sales licenses only, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the licenses for the 24 businesses listed.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Town of North Smithfield, Rhode Island, 2025, 2026, general business license renewals. All licenses are subject to payment of town taxes, fire inspection, approval, and all fees paid. Bingo license, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve it. I'll make a motion to approve the bingo license for the one business.
I didn't realize that you even needed a bingo license. Thank you.
Are you kidding?
Only if you're doing bingo.
What?
Only if you're doing bingo.
Huh. Um, okay, I think, that's a mo, do we have a motion? I think somebody's making fun of me, but I went over my head. Do we have a second? Oh, Claire, you're second?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Your turn, Claire, do you approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Board Cats and Dogs license, Cozy Quarters Pet Inn?
I will make a motion to approve the general business license renewal.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Dry cleaners license?
I will make a motion to approve the dry cleaners license for personal touch cleaners.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Firearms and/or ammunition license, subject to additional approval from ATF. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, Claire makes a motion to approve firearms and/or ammunition license, subject to additional approval from ATF. That's a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Hotel Motel license?
I'll make a motion to approve the general business license renewal for the two motel, motel listed.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, John, roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Junkyard license, subject to additional approval from Rhode Island Department of Business Regulations. There is one noted here that I would like to remove, Leo's Auto Parts, requesting a change in hours at 955 Iron Mine Hill Road. The owner corporation or LLC name is HT Auto LLC. I'd like to make the recommendation that we do not vote on this request for license renewal this evening, and that we schedule an evidentiary public hearing to discuss this request.
Second.
At that hearing, thanks, Claire, I just want to make mention that at that hearing, I'd like to request that representatives of the police, fire, and zoning departments attend to be able to provide comment, as well as members of the public.
Counsel, acting counsel president, if you could also reference the letter from the zoning officer that was submitted. That was requesting the, the, not acting on this.
Would you like me to read that, or?
It's exactly what you just said, I just want you to acknowledge that you did receive that.
Yes, I did receive that, thank you. So that's, I guess, a motion to?
Second.
I suggest that in part of this, that you also pick a date certain for the evidentiary hearing, and I would suggest that we do that on, I assume we could meet the timeframe on December 1st?
We do have boards and commissions appointments on December 1st as well.
Okay.
Just.
All right.
And we have our public hearing for the ordinance?
I don't want this going on to December 15th, because, unless you want to do a special meeting, which I think, you know, that's always your option too, but I don't want to, I don't want to drag this out. I think that the, the owner of the license deserves a timely response to their request.
Well, it's two weeks, can we coordinate to have our police, fire, and zoning departments at the December 1st meeting?
I'm sure we can find representation, yes.
Okay.
Leo, you can be there, right? Okay, chief? Fire definitely will be there.
So.
Just on a procedural issue though, would they need an extension for the next, the next two weeks?
No.
Does it technically expire the first?
It doesn't desire, until January 1, December 31?
December 31.
Okay, yes, we're all set.
Perfect.
So my motion was to not vote on the request for the license renewal for Leo's Auto Parts, and to schedule an evidentiary public hearing for December 1st. So that's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Claire and David both vying for a second here. Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I will make a motion to approve the general business license renewals for Northeast Auto Recycling Inc. and North Smithfield Auto Recycling, subject to approval from Rhode Island Department of Business Regulations and the other conditions at the top of the page.
Second.
That's a motion, and a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Mobile food establishment, subject to additional approval from DOH and the state fire marshal. I'll make a motion to approve the general business license renewals for the mobile food establishments, subject to additional approval from DOH and our state fire marshal, as well as the conditions, the licensing conditions of the town, so that's a motion, do we have a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Peddler Hawker license?
I'll make a motion to approve the general business license renewal for Dell's Lemonade and New England Novelty, subject to conditions of the town.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Secondhand license?
I will make a motion to approve the general business license renewal for the four businesses listed in secondhand license, subject to the conditions of the town.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Skating rink license?
I will make a motion to approve the general business license renewal for Rhode Island Sports Center, subject to the town's conditions.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Solicitation license?
I will make a motion to approve the general business license renewal for the three businesses listed in solicitation license, subject to the town's conditions.
That's a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, John, roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Mr. Christopherow?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara? Mr. Puncak?
Yes.
Let me ask you something quickly, are these the only solicitors? Because the way I get these phone calls, and what they're selling, it's a lot more than this.
That's door-to-door, Claire.
Oh, they do that too, they get you on the phone, I swear to God, they're on the phone.
No, this license is for door-to-door.
I realize that, but they still do it.
Yeah, I know.
You think they call you and then they show up at your door?
Yes.
If you have somebody that does that, feel free to call us, because they should be coming to us for a license, but we wouldn't know they're doing that unless they come to us. So give us a call, Claire.
Drop a dime.
And then lastly, we have the junkyard license, subject to additional approval from Rhode Island Department of Business Regulations. Leo's Auto Parts is requesting that change in hours, but we decided that we're going to table, so we're not going to vote on this tonight. Okay, and not table, but we scheduled an evidentiary public hearing, okay. Okay, that was much less painful than last year. I think we went line by line, unless everybody else is feeling some pain, but.
I think you do a fabulous.
Could do it again.
Thank you very much.
You can have it next time again.
Thanks, Claire. Okay, discussion by council, vote or other action on payment of bills.
Make it easy on yourselves.
I personally didn't have any questions.
I have one, or two, or three.
Are you sure?
Jeez. Trying to break records here tonight, David.
So page three of the detailed expenditure status report.
Yep.
The software licenses for the planning department.
Yep.
4,700 negative.
That, as well as the, the building and zoning, that's from our lovely software that we all have to use now. What's the software you guys have, what's the name of that? OpenGov, thank you.
Why is it ugly?
I didn't say ugly, I said lovely.
Oh. So that's something that came about recently?
Yeah, it was, it was, the, the cost of it wasn't anticipated when we had made the budgets, way higher than we anticipated. budgets, way higher than we anticipated, but we will be getting, um, if I remember correctly, there is a reimbursement provided to each municipality. Um, and I'm pretty sure that strictly, uh, flows through just the building and zoning, um, but we're hoping that there'll be more reimbursements for each department that uses each module.
So is that like the building permit portal?
Yep, yeah.
Building permit, planning is also part of that, planning and zoning. Um, so at this point, I think the state is compensating the towns for signing up to OpenGov. I fully expected at a certain point in time, the state's going to try and say, okay, you know, we're not going to reimburse anymore, but it, uh.
More state unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
We also use that for all licensing.
Yeah. It's a lot of modules. It went from only paying a few thousand total for the town to a lot of money in total.
And then there was one other one, the general government health insurance.
Yeah, I saw that. I plan on looking at that this week.
That was.
Yeah. Yeah, I plan on diving into that one myself, figure out what's going on.
So, so the actual cost of the, that our
Software?
software wasn't disclosed initially to us?
We, we used an estimate, we used what we had thought would, would be for the prior year, which didn't go up to a ton, but it went up more than we expected.
Yeah.
Um, but I put in, when we put in the budget, I put in what it would cost and then, which is higher than after, because we're going to get a reimbursement, right? So right now it's negative because we haven't gotten the reimbursement yet.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, okay.
They use a very odd system to calculating how much it costs. They use buckets.
Yes.
So you, you really don't know. They, that's kind of like how many businesses that you use it for or different accounts. So it's a, a really interesting system and it's very difficult to determine how costly it would be, so.
And do we pay annually or is it monthly?
Annually.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, then. I will make a motion to approve the payment of bills for November 17th, 2025, in the amount of $2,894,709.32.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Open forum pursuant to 42-46-6D, maximum of three minutes per person. Do we have anybody that would like to speak in open forum this evening?
Chief?
Leo? No? Okay. Okay. For the record, nobody would like to speak in open forum this evening. Uh, motion to adjourn. Do we say?
Second.
All, all in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you, everyone.